And it's 7:30. All right, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order the January 9, 2023 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Before we begin with the invocation given by Commissioner Hunt, I just want to take the opportunity to recognize that today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And so we have Chief Moore here tonight. We have a number of other of our dedicated public servants in the Police Department out serving us tonight throughout the week, every day. Here in Royal Oak, we're very blessed and we really do appreciate our Royal Oak Police Department. I think we have the best women and men serving in blue, and you can't make us any more proud. So Chief Moore, thank you for your leadership, and thank you to all the men and women of the Royal Oak Police Department for everything you do keeping us safe. So we're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Hunt, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
As we enter a new year, this is a time where we make plans to mend old broken bridges and forgive mistakes of the past year. It offers a new chance of gratitude and unity and provides an opportunity to invite new people and new experiences into our lives. When contemplating the new year, our excitement for a fresh start is transformed into energy for setting new goals and outcomes and improving on our effort to become better human beings. The city of Royal Oak is no exception to this desire to become better, and we welcome the challenge to become a more understanding community as we look to seat the inaugural Human Rights Commission. This commission will promote and protect the civil and human rights of the residents, employees, and visitors of Royal Oak. The group will seek to encourage mutual respect among the diverse groups that are part of our community. The installation of this representative and knowledgeable group should remind us all that today we are blessed to have new opportunities for understanding, education, and empathy. So as we begin this new year and launch this new committee, let us seek to achieve the goal of unity and camaraderie amongst diversity. And as we continue this journey together, I pray that we all remember the words of philosopher Michael Novak. Unity and diversity is the highest possible attainment of a civilization, a testimony to the most notable possibilities of human race. The attainment is made possible through passionate concern for choice and an atmosphere of social trust. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have Director Irwin here from the Royal Oak Public Library, another fine institution in this city, and we are eagerly anticipating your presentation of the Public Library's 2022 Annual Report. Director Irwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here today to talk about our annual report from fiscal year 2122. So let me share some of the highlights. First of all, I've given you all a hard copy of our annual report. If anybody here is interested, I will leave some out in the lobby so you can check it out as well. We'll also have copies in the library. So some of the highlights from 2122, I started my job in September of 2021. We also hired our first teen services librarian, Becca Russell. Our youth services supervisor left in January. She retired, so we hired Leah Kenny to take her place. We also had vacancies of part-time staff. We took the hours of those part-time staff and their pay, and we transformed those into some full-time positions. So we had three people who were part-time staff who became full-time staff last year as municipal clerks. Those were some very exciting things for us. As to the facility, we went through our LED conversion, so all the lights in the building were converted to LEDs last September and October. We started a remodel of our spaces. We started that in the spring. It was something that had started in 2019, and then there was 2020. We don't want to talk about 2020. And then we continued it in last fiscal year, and we finished it this fall, actually. We added ADA accessible doors to our 11-mile entrance. Traditionally, that entrance, my understanding, it had been closed most of the time. So both entrances are open, and they all have ADA accessible doors. So that was a great addition to the library. And internally, we added some access control so that staff and volunteers can go in and out of areas safely while protecting the staff and the staff spaces. So those are some changes that were with the facility. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the big change was Centennial Commons opening, and we have the terrace outside. While we're still waiting for some of the final touches on the terrace area, it's been really popular. I know I used it myself all summer long. People would have meetings out there after lunch. It was really a wonderful space, and it opened up space for outdoor programming as well, which is something that also came about again in last fiscal year as we started in-person programming again in June. So for youth services, they're all in person. For teen services, they're all in person as well. And for adults, they're doing hybrid. So they're doing some in person, some online. So we're trying to meet all the needs of various people in the community as we're still going through COVID and a whole variety of other illnesses. Our hours, we surveyed the community about our hours, and so we made an adjustment to our hours by opening an hour earlier and closing an hour later Monday, or an hour earlier, Monday through Thursday. So from 9:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m., but we remained at 9:00 until 6:00 Friday and Saturday. So really, we added two hours of service during the week. And then we're open on Sundays, close in the summertime from Memorial Day to Labor Day on Sundays, but otherwise, we're open 1:00 to 5:00. So those were some changes and some updates to our hours. As to our revenues, our millage income was up 3%, and our penal fines were up 2.5%. They have gone down significantly, however, and that is part of social justice in this world, where instead of charging people fines for some of the minor crimes they may have committed, that they're finding other ways to help people in the community of Oakland County. So we do get a portion of penal fines. So they were up, but they were down probably about $20,000 in this new fiscal year. Fines and fees were down 17%. Why? Because we became a fine-free library. So if you return your materials late, we don't charge you late fees. If you lose it, then we're going to charge you the cost of that item. But otherwise, we don't charge any late fees, so that's why that revenue is down as well. Grants and gifts were down 53%. That's because we had a big grant from the National Endowment for the Arts to form a makerspace in the library, and that's money that is not repeated. So those numbers were down a bit, and we used about $157,000 from our fund balance to make us balance out for the year. As to our expenditures, they were down about 7%, which matched our revenues. Our personnel costs were down 9.8%. We had all of those vacancies I alluded to earlier, that we were not paying salaries to people that did not work there. We also had higher-level positions that had left, which included the director until I came, and our youth services supervisor, who was also a higher-level position, and it took a couple months to fill her position. As to library activities, our statistics are reflecting a recovery from COVID. You can see, if you're looking in our brochure, that our visitors, of course, were up 235%. Why? Because we were actually open. We were closed for so long, and it was nice to have our doors open again. We had an increase in our programs and outreach of about 14%, with a 76% increase in program attendance. Why? Because people like to come in person. They really do enjoy coming to the library and experiencing programs and seeing their friends and family and neighbors. Our reference questions also were up 117%. The computer use, of course, was up 242%. Our circulation is approaching those pre-pandemic levels. It was up 49% over the year before, and we're around where we were pre-pandemic, which is great. More cardholders, 4% increase in that. The one area that we went down was our database use, and that's not surprising, because as people can go out and do their own research, they don't rely on online databases as much. So those were some of the things that were our changes in our activities. We had some changes in our board. Stacy Webward, Eric McLeod, Mark Walton, Aaron Van Beek, and Carla Gutz all left the board. But we gained Shannon Carlson, Matthew Dyer, Lauren Josinski, Michelle Cook, and Josh Sipes. They have all joined the board. Josh joined this past fall. Everybody else joined in the last fiscal year. They're all very, very busy people. So far this year, which means from July on, our millage passed, which was very exciting. We're very excited to have our new millage. It's for the next 10 years. That was voted in in August. We, once again, when a part-time person left, we were able to take their hours and create a full-time position for a librarian. So we gained a full-time, not gained, but transferred hours to create a full-time position in our adult services department. We also moved, we have a staff member who's studying for her Master of Library and Information Science at Wayne State, and we created an internship for her. So she is learning all different areas of the library. So we have three separate departments, and she's learning all of those. And she created a demographic report, which I have given to the council or the commission, and it looks like this. So you can see, she put together information about the schools, about Royal Oak. She gathered it from a whole variety of sources, so this might be some good after-the-meeting reading for all of you. We finished our remodel. So if you stop into the library, you can see our new fireplace, which is looking out right over the butterfly garden and the park. There's a lot of various seating throughout the whole building. It's really lovely. It's a great place to go. This is a picture of our Friends of the Library Board. They bought, we created some Band Books Week t-shirts that highlighted books that have people have challenged, tried to challenge or banned throughout the United States for 10 years, from 2010 to 2019, and they were featured on the back of that shirt. They sold like wildfire. People loved them. We still have some available. They couldn't keep up with the orders for a long time. But now we have a nice little stock, so if you're interested in a Band Books Week shirt, stop by the library and you can pick one up. They're only $15. One of the city's initiatives is Aging in Place. Three different staff worked on various committees on Aging in Place, and so we helped craft some of the things that the library would do to support those initiatives. It's things that we do already, but things that we're looking to do. So one of the initiatives we started was what we call our LEAP program, the Library Exploration and Activities Program. And we are visiting Barton Towers and Royal Oak Manor, and we're setting some things up with them to get materials to their residents and get them set up with library cards. We've just started out on this endeavor this fall, and it went really well, and so we're looking to work with them to figure out how will this whole program work, and that's been really great. We also have a lot of programs. Being that some of our programs are online and in person allows for people who are homebound, who can't participate in things in person, can still participate in programs. So those are some of the ways we're meeting the Aging in Place that the city is doing. We also completed a library use survey this fall, which I've given a copy to each of the Commissioners and to City Manager Break. And it was just a basic survey to find out what people wanted from the library, how they use the library, what's working for them, what's not. And so we are going through those results right now. There's some basic results, and then there's a lot of comments. So there's all these different things that we are going through as staff, so we can figure out how to best meet the needs of our community. And that is my report. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Director Irwin. No questions?
Well, hope to see you all in the library.
Looks like Commissioner Kolo has a question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you for this presentation. Seeing these numbers is so impressive, especially that we're reapproaching the pre-pandemic levels of use, getting that many more people back into the library, back into using our facilities. And this doesn't discount the fact that during the pandemic, the library excelled at making sure that people had everything that they needed. It's great to see that they're picking right back up. The services that you had offered are being once again utilized in person. So thank, you know, huge thanks to you, to the staff, to the Library Board, and everyone that keeps this library, you know, one of the best in the state.
Thank you. And, you know, the staff did work really hard during the pandemic, and a lot of the services we provided are still popular today. Databases are a little different from downloadables, which are eBooks, e-audiobooks, and e-video and music, and those services still prove to be popular. They continue growing in their use, so people really discovered that they can get those free materials from the library. That's right, they're free. Well, your taxes pay for them, but really, they are free eBooks, free e-audio. Ask our staff, we'll show you how to do it. We have multiple services, and those have continued to be popular even after the shutdown of our society.
And it goes to show that, you know, this community overwhelmingly approved your military year this year, to make, we value the services that the library offers, we value what you're doing, and we want to make sure it's well-funded. So once again, just thank you to you and the entire library staff and board.
Thank you. They are wonderful. The board is wonderful to work with, and we have a great staff.
You got to rid of the bad ones, so it's okay.
We'll go with Mayor Pro-Ten Melanie Macy and Vice Chair Melanie Macy.
The Library Board?
Yeah.
So I also just wanted to thank you. So this, it's been a pretty exciting first year to have you as our director, and, you know, the director search was a challenging one, and to get you here and have seen what you've been able to do with the library and really bringing the staff forward and letting them shine at all the ways that they do that in their roles. I'm so thrilled that we're able to have these full-time people who've been at the library for a long time, working there and feel like a part of this community, and now have stepped into full-time roles. It just really makes it feel much more like a family, and it's reflected back from the community all of the time. People are constantly telling me how much they love the library, and they know the people by name, and they are so thrilled with the services. The look is great, of course, but I think it's really the people who bring that feeling forward, and I'm very grateful to you for what you've done in your leadership for this library. So thank you so much for this. I'm so much fun to watch how this library has developed. It's just, you know, just a regular city library, yet it seems like we're inventing ourselves a new every year. And if you're not following the library on social media, you are missing out, because it is some of the best things that I follow. It's hilarious and entertaining. So thank you very much, and please pass our thanks on to the staff.
I will. And yes, two of our younger staff, Gillian Goldblatt, who's our adult services librarian, who became full-time this August, she's one of those positions, and Becca Russell, our teen services librarian, they pretty much run our social media, and they are just so clever, and they find all sorts of really interesting ways to share things about the library and books and a whole variety of things. They are fun to follow, so I definitely recommend it.
Agreed. Yeah, I'll just, maybe a question or an observation. Certainly, coming out of the pandemic and having sort of still a wonky year this year in 2021 for the first part, you know, the visitors were up to 107,000, maybe a little short of what they were in 2019 and 2020. But if you go down and you look at the circulation, to me, some of the things that, I mean, the circulation just, you know, dominates all years that we show here, and it shows that, you know, folks were more engaged. Guys stepped up, became innovative during the pandemic, offered the drop-off pickup for books and media, and it looks like that's sticking.
It is. Yeah, and, you know, credit to our professional librarian staff who select the materials for the collection. It is through that selection and trying to focus on diverse authors and topics that it's appealing to the public, and so they are finding the things that they want in the library. And people can also make suggestions for things to us to purchase. So you can go on our website, we can show you how to find that spot where you can fill out a form to make a suggestion. But we're really striving to improve our collection, and that's one thing, when you look at our collection size, you see it's gone down a little bit. That's because we're getting some of the, rid of some of the really old stuff that you don't want old medical books on your shelves. You don't want a history book from 1979. So we're really going through the collection and cleaning it up to make sure the information that we are providing is relevant. So I think that's kudos to the librarian staff.
No, I think it's, the library continues to author a remarkable story here, and much to the credit of everybody on staff, the leadership of past and present directors, and of course, our volunteer board of Library Board members. So congratulations on a good year. We look forward to a great year this year as well. And as partners, we're here to help, and thank you for remaining engaged in the community. And I guess on behalf of everybody up here, you know, Melanie already gave the thanks, thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Can't wait for the next chapter.
Oh my God, so many puns. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, another presentation in the books.
Don't encourage him. Do not encourage him.
Let him handle the last one. He authored it.
You got to read the room, okay, Dan?
Show a little spine here, man.
Okay, let's close the book on this and move on.
All right.
Turn the page.
Oh gosh. Oh my goodness. All right, so we are now at the approval of the agenda. Does anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Prush?
I'll move approval.
A motion by Commissioner Prush, second by Commissioner Duba. Discussion on the agenda. No discussion, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have an agenda. All right, this brings us to everybody's favorite part of the commission meeting, which is public comment. So I'll do my reading of the rules here. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issues, whether or not they're on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the entire commission and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight, please wait until recognized by me, the mayor, then come up to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful, the city commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic. There's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem. Lots of folks email us ahead of the meeting, and the earlier you email us, the better chance we have an opportunity to read it before tonight. Please note, we typically don't respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address those questions when the topic is discussed. Or if your question doesn't relate to anything on the agenda, the city manager is taking notes as well, and will follow up as appropriate. So with that, who's first? One or three? Are you guys coming up as a crew, or?
Oh, no, we don't.
Okay.
Am I recognized?
You're recognized, Lisa.
Good evening. You'll never guess why I'm here. My name is Lisa Mason, and I live at 2225 Ferncliff Avenue, and I will be very brief. I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you behind the table or at the table tonight, also those who aren't present but are often here, that all of you worked hard to support the Human Rights Commission. We're thrilled that it's been established. We're really excited about the diversity of the group that was selected by the Appointments Committee, and really looking forward to now the hard work ahead of really doing the Human Rights Commission work, which I will be, as the Appointments Committee heard the other night, I will be actively participating in as a supportive citizen, as an influencer. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill Harrison, Royal Oak. I can't tell you how disappointed I am in you folks. Regard to this parking system, the parking meters. I've been here before. I've asked, why are some of these lots, the meters are bagged? I get no answers. I went to the DDA, and I got nothing. And finally, I've, you know, and there were 3,000 people that signed a petition against these meters and how they're hurting the business, particularly on Washington, and I get nothing. And now I've found out through a back door that you're putting these same meters in the parking lots, and tell me if that's not true. Why would you continue to subscribe to a parking meter system that just doesn't work? And my understanding, and I've said this before, that there were 30 different communities that had these same meters and got rid of them, and we're the only one left. Correct me if I'm wrong. You know, for a bunch that keeps bragging about how transparent you are and everything, it's not working. And, you know, you talk about, if you got a question, send you a question, you'll give back to me. Nobody's gotten back to me. I'm really disappointed. On a lighter note, I'm still waiting to see when you're going to put a historical marker at the Hamer Park. You know, the history of the Hamer family is as important, or perhaps more important, than the stars. And we have the Orson Star and the Almond Star. They have these typical green historical markers, and I think it's very important that we have one on Hamer Park. The other thing is bicycles. I've got a regular pop for you here. You know, I keep talking about the need to stress the fact that bicyclists have to obey the traffic laws, as do vehicles when they're riding in the street. And I was recently driving down Main Street at Normandy. There's a traffic light there. It's a bad intersection. You will recall when somebody came down Normandy and ran right into the house across the street. And there's a sign there that says, "Stop here for the traffic signal." And then there's another sign that says, "Except bicycles." What the heck does that do to, it certainly doesn't encourage the bicyclists to follow the traffic laws. It's just, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Christian.
Good evening. My name is Christian Steer. My wife and I live at 614 Baldwin. I've come over the last couple of months, the first time was in November, to talk about the paving of Fair Grove as a special assessment. And after that meeting and talking to Ms. Donahue and also other neighbors that had come to the meeting and other, just individuals in the neighborhood, I had expressed my opinion in the December meeting that, you know, paving the entire street was not what was best for the community. You know, my wife and I are not intending to cut down trees just to pave a road, but when we live on Forest Avenue at the corner of Forest in Fair Grove, we would like to have a street that's paved right there. Other individuals have said, why would we purchase a house on a dirt road? You know, people will ask, you know, why don't I drive a horse and buggy as well? The only thing I would say is, you know, I also, you know, came to the commission with this as well, because I had received a letter about a year and a half ago that during the road millage, we would only pay 25% of what it would cost to have the road paved. And so it was in my best interest to say, why don't we, from an economic standpoint, you know, if we're going to have to pay for it, only pay a quarter rather than 100%. For the, what's on the agenda today, which is going to be item F, that's going to be something that would be a half of a road from Forest to the middle of Fair Grove, and it would leave gravel road from the middle of Fair Grove all the way to Hawthorne Avenue. I think this is the best option for all of the neighbors that are there, in my opinion. There are other neighbors that, you know, may think differently, but it only assesses myself and the neighbor to the east who would like the road, and it does not assess any type of financial assessment to any of the neighbors outside of that as well. I just wanted to express my interest on having you approve that to the next phase, and thank you for all of your time. Appreciate it.
Mr. Steer.
Hi, my name is Lynn Muth. I live at 1609 Forest Dale. I'm going to not reiterate a lot of what Lisa said, but thank you. Thank you to Paul Brake and Erin for reviewing, and Susan and all the people that worked hard with the task force to come up with the recommendation, and all the work that everyone has done in reviewing this. So very grateful to be here at that point, or at this time. Just wanted to reiterate, I had mentioned this on Wednesday, but just as everyone is here, just be able to say, highly recommend that this commission embark on some DEI training so that everyone is on the same page as the commission, and would recommend that for, you know, the city at large as well. Currently, the Police Department, for example, has implicit bias training, so it just seems that other... So it just seems that other, as, as we work as a community, that we should all have this type of training and get this type of understanding. So again, thank you so much for everything and I'm looking forward for this evening and for the commission sticking, starting. And be like Lisa, I'll be an influencer while I'm here. Thanks.
Going once? Going twice? All right, we'll close public comment and bring the meeting back up to this side of the table. Thank you, everyone, for sharing your thoughts and ideas and concerns. We are now at item seven of tonight's agenda, which is the consent agenda. This is the only item, actually, we have tonight, Commissioner. So I don't know mathematically if it's a consent agenda or the agenda. I'm not sure how we phrase that. Commissioner Prush?
I would ask that item B be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay. Paper copy. Item B. Anybody else? Commissioner Douglas?
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
A motion to move forward with the consent agenda with the exception of B, that will be discussed. Okay, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. Consent agenda now, city minutes from, meeting minutes from the 12th and the 19th, approval of appointments, committee rotation, claims from the 27th, the 30th, and the 30th special pay in January 10th, 2023, approval of purchase order, standard resolution one, special assessment paving of Fair Grove Avenue, and receive and file the non-action items, which are the November 2022 investment report and the fourth quarter 2022 training evaluations form. Any discussion? All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion passes. Commissioner Prush? Item B formerly in the consent.
Okay. For those of you who don't have all of the supporting materials in front of you that are on the agenda, this item includes not only new appointments to the Historic District Commission and the Historic District Study Committee, the Royal Oak Advisory, Environmental Advisory Committee, and reappointments to the Board Review and the Historic District Study Committee, but also the new seven appointees to the Human Rights Commission. And I really think that this deserves to be on the regular agenda and not the consent agenda. Because we have in front of us a list of seven extraordinary individuals with extraordinary qualifications for this type of work. We are so blessed as a community to have people, not only with these credentials, but also to have the diversity that they represent in terms of service on this commission. We have people who are, have extensive experience in the area of civil rights and racial equality. We have someone who is, has extensive experience because she herself has a physical disability in physical disability rights and, and handicap rights. We have someone who has extensive experience in Native American issues here in the state of Michigan for decades and so on and so forth. It, it just moggles the mind that we, as a community, have this type of talent in our community and are able to harness it and actually have seven volunteers who are willing to step up and say, I volunteer for this. This is going to be hard work. There's going to be challenges. There's going to be days where they're going to be wondering why on earth they volunteered for this. But on the other hand, they are going to do remarkable, remarkable things. And I, I just think that we need to acknowledge that in, in, at a regular point in the agenda rather than just on the consent agenda. And to thank them for their willingness to step forward to serve and to tell them that, you know, we will stand behind them and, and help them with whatever we possibly can. And to congratulate them in their new position as human rights commissioners. So that's why I pulled this off the agenda and I would move for approval of these appointments and reappointments.
A motion by Commissioner Prush, second by Commissioner Duba. Mr. Macy.
Thank you, Commissioner Prush, for pulling this off because I agree, this deserves more attention than it was received on the consent agenda. I mean, appointing seven people to this body was no easy task, but I will say, as, as you've stated, that this is a really good group and it came from quite a deep pool. So we had, we had a wealth of choices, just, just people who are applying here to the Royal Human Rights Commission, which was, I was really moved by that, that so many people were stepping up to take that kind of role on. Some of them are residents, some of them are not residents. There are people who work here, people who live here, people who work with children, people who work with older people. It's, 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 they're really, it's, it's a really diverse group and I think they're gonna work well together. And in, in putting them together on the Appointments Committee, it was, like I said, it was challenging because there were so many. We would have, we could have placed twice as many if we had had the, the option to do that. But I think, I think this is going to be a really good group of people who bring different experiences and different personalities to the table and who will be looking at this from many different angles. And I don't think that they're gonna just rest on their haunches. I think they're gonna get to work. And that's part of what I was hoping for and excited about for this commission. So anyway, I just wanted to also thank all these people. I don't know, should we say their names? Like this is, maybe I'm just gonna say them. So Ashley Morell, Tikea Smith, Dr. Kimberly Martin, Brett Tlander, Rachel Andrews, Robert Luxon, and Annie Oraski. So that's, that's our list and we're hopeful that they're gonna be amazing. That's all. I don't know if the other people from the appointments, Christian, oh.
Mr. Duba.
Sure, I think that about says it all. Thanks for bringing this forward. Thanks to the Appointments Committee for doing the hard work, for sorting through all those, you know, interested folks who would have done an equally exceptional job on this. I think we've landed a really good group of people who are going to now do the work of taking us beyond talking about being an inclusive and welcoming city, which, you know, we are, we aspire to be, but that is work that takes planning and, and it has to be deliberate. And that's what this body is gonna lead the charge on. So I'm really excited now to see everyone get their hands in this, bring us some good ideas, bring the city staff some good ideas. Thank you to the citizens who helped move the ball on this. You know, we had, I think, voted unanimously to enact this committee two years ago or so. And, you know, we worked together with, with some very concerned folks to, to make sure that we got this done in a timely matter. Thank you for staff, to staff for making this happen. Really excited to see what comes of this and to support this motion.
Mr. Hunt?
Well, I echo what everyone else said. I mean, this was a long time in the making. Thank you to everyone who applied for this position and, or these positions and actually are going to sit on these commissions. It, it, sitting on these commissions take you away from your friends, your family. You could be doing other things rather than, you know, coming here, doing city work. And we appreciate the fact that, you know, you seven are interested in not only sitting on this commission, but setting it up, doing the, the legwork of getting it going. That's going to be the hardest part of this, I think. So thanks to everyone that's, you know, on that commission. But also, I also see that we're going to continue to get the benefit of the knowledge of Ms. Bricker as she sits on the Environment, Environmental Advisory Commission. So anyone who sits on these are, you know, giving of themselves and their families are giving of themselves. So I'm just appreciative of that.
Yeah, I have no better words to say other than just make it a point that, how grateful we are for these volunteers. And, and not to undermine any of the work that volunteers do today on our established committees and boards, but this is going to be extra tough because it's all brand-new territory for the city, for the volunteers, for how do we go through the procedures? How do we figure out how to, you know, set everything up? And I think that's an extra task on top of the task at hand. And I'm really glad that we have such a diverse group of people because I see that being the, the key and factor to success of starting a new commission like this. So I'm eager to see everything that they produce, advise, and support in the community and can't wait to see the results. So, and thank you to all the folks that got this thing started and all the time and effort put in to, to make sure we have a, and do have a good process here. So with that, I will call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. So notwithstanding a dissertation from Commissioner Colo, that brings us to the end of our...
I have been extremely...
Commissioner, I'll certainly entertain a motion to adjourn if someone makes one. We have a, Commissioner Colo.
Having done the, arguably, some of the most important work of the city in a while here, and part of these, these commissions, I move they re-adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Colo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Duba. All right, discussion on this motion. With none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.